Yes, we are good.
All right, stand by in five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 31st, 2023, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2023, under legislation enacted in July of 2022. The statute, Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with correspondence. Kevin?
We received a memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of CTEC, dated January 10th, 2023, regarding the Walter E. Quigley Jr. Student of the Month Awards for December 2022. The Long Meadow student honored was Gage Burns in Building Property Managed Building Property Maintenance II.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, we have a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the January 10th, 2023, school committee meeting as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Is anybody online among our group yet?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. So we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Tiana?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes, for me as well. Thank you. All right, moving on to visitor comments. If we have anyone here or at home who would like to make any visitor comments. If there's anyone at home who would like to make comments, please raise your hand or turn your camera on and let us see you and we'll give you a chance to speak. All right, seeing no comments, we will move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Any school committee members? Go ahead, Tiana.
I gotta read it from here. It's from Kayla Worland. So this is a message from Kayla Worland, our amazing music teacher and leader and inspiration at LHS. So today we got this and it says, Dear Tom, Mr. Landers and School Committee, on Saturday, January 28th, LHS students Megan Baker and May Dromy held our first ever instrument drive. They designed, planned, publicized, and ran the event. In order to break down barriers to participation for all children, they collected donations of instruments no longer in use by families. The drive produced about a dozen instruments from a flute to a tuba, exclamation point. Congratulations to Megan and May for their hard work and generous spirits, Kayla. And so I just thought that was just another amazing demonstration of high school students working together with the community and just being caring and compassionate for those who don't get the opportunity to participate in music. So I just wanted to share that because it was awesome.
Wonderful, and congratulations to Megan and May. Any other comments or recognitions or announcements? All right, seeing none, we will move right. Actually, we are going to pause for a moment before we move into business with guests. And I'm going to turn over to Dr. Rocher.
Thank you. My report is further down in the agenda, but I wanted to ask the committee just to take note tonight of the sad passing of Jalen Rivera. Jalen was a 17-year-old student. She had courageously battled some medical challenges for a number of years to the point where she hadn't been with us in person since her time at Glenbrook in 7th grade. But certainly she was close to many of our staff members and she survived by some siblings who were at Wolf Swamp and another student who was attended both Wolf Swamp and Glenbrook. So we're saddened by Jalen's passing and our hearts collectively go out to the Rivera family and Jalen's siblings and good friends. So if I could ask the committee for a moment of silence, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to business with guests. Tonight we'll be moving forward with the presentation of the FY24 budget. You think Dr. Rocher, you're starting though? Or is that Mr. Mazza?
I will, I'll kick us off if I could. And if you give me a moment just to share my screen here. And as I pull up the slide deck, I want to acknowledge and welcome our entire administrative team and thank them for coming out tonight. And they're certainly prepared and ready to answer any questions you might have. And if there's any specific context that they can provide, I'm sure they'd be willing, so.
You have to share that room as well?
Yeah. I just haven't pulled it up yet. All right, I'm gonna keep it in this mode if that's okay. All right, so this is annually the time when we present to the school committee and to the wider community, a recommendation to support the fine work that we're involved with for the coming school year. So though the coming school year is some eight months away or so, we have put together a budget recommendation for your consideration. And as I kick off, a special thanks and appreciation to Assistant Superintendent Tom Mazza for his amazing efforts putting together what is, I'd say, one of the more complicated budgets that we've had in many, many years. So thank you, Tom. Thanks to the entire administrative team. You know, we bring this to you as a team. It is the result of weeks and months of conversation. And so on top of that, I want to thank our partners on the town side, Tom Andrew Lynn Simmons, Finance Director Paul Pasterzic, for keeping us informed and helping us understand the wider fiscal context. And additionally, thanks to the Finance Committee who had an opportunity to kind of understand this recommendation at a high level last week. And so we appreciate the feedback of the Finance Committee as well. So I'll kick us off by starting sort of at the end of this presentation. And this is the highest level summary that we could provide to the committee and to the community on the FY24 budget. Specifically, this recommendation asks for a $1.5 million increase in the contribution that we receive from the general fund. It also accounts for an increase of $252,000 in special revenue. And by special revenue, we're referring to receipts that come directly to the district in the form of grants mainly. And then finally, this would account for a recommendation of $1.75 million over the FY23 voted and approved budget. So the net total of this is a total budget of $41,943,000 at $38 for to support the 2324 school year. So I start with this slide for one specific reason, to sort of demonstrate that this is a, I call it, an ambitious request, but it is one that is truly reflective of the needs of our staff and the needs of our students. So with a request of with an increase of $1.5 million from the general fund, this is one of the more significant budgets that we bring to the school committee and hopefully bring to the town at some point. And my hope is that the next few slides especially will set the wider context and hopefully give the committee and the wider community an understanding of some of the challenges and opportunities that are in front of us as we prepare for the 2324 school year. So starting at a very high level, thinking about some of the economic factors, the economic variables that are shaping our budget that really go beyond the boundaries of our school campuses. And specifically, I'd start with the inflationary pressures that I think we're all too familiar with, that sort of the cost of doing business has increased in the same way that the cost of running a household has increased. And so we want to be cognizant of that. We want to convey that and hopefully folks will understand that just as expenses have increased at the household level, they have also increased for us in terms of operating and running a school district. We'll talk a little bit later about one of the major factors in the FY24 budget, which is out-of-district tuition rates. So the, at the state level, the tuition rate is set for school districts. This is the tuition that we would pay private schools that serve public school students. And so we'll talk a little bit about what that tuition rate looks like for us and how it's shaping the 24 budget. And the inflationary pressures extend to other aspects of our operation, including utilities and transportation and compensation, et cetera, et cetera. So these are all factors that are shaping our work and shaping the 24 budget. There are still, it's very early in the budget process. We are many months away, obviously, from opening school, but we're also months away from the point where the town would have an opportunity to finalize the town budget that is includes the school request. One of the unknowns is the path that the state will take in terms of the Chapter 70 funding. Chapter 70 is the main source of revenue that communities receive to support the work of school districts. You may recall that last year, we were really fortunate that the state began to implement an overdue, a long overdue, approach to funding school districts. And so we were fortunate that the town of Long Meadow received a significant increase in Chapter 70 funding. The Chapter 70 revenue goes straight to the town, but it's obviously puts the town in a better position to help us support our activities. So we don't know if the state will take the next step in terms of implementing the revisions to the Chapter 70 funding formula. We hope they do. That would be a great relief to this community if it happened. Certainly, as we put this budget together, we want to be aware of the fiscal position, the constraints that the town is working under. We've talked about the tax ceiling that is at some point in the future for the town of Long Meadow. And obviously, they have their own variables that they have to pin down in terms of local receipts, in terms of state revenue, in terms of the costs that they are anticipating for the coming fiscal year. And the state budget development process, it's frustrating that we have to bring a budget forward to you without having had the advantage of understanding even what the governor, the new governor will propose in her budget for to the legislature. So, you know, again, I say all this because there are, though we are bringing forward a recommendation, there's plenty of variables that are up in the air and costs and revenue that need to be ultimately pinned down. Just to step back on, if it's a curiosity to the committee or to anyone, this is a snapshot of Chapter 78. You can see that Chapter 78, again, it goes directly to the town of Long Meadow as a receipt, but it funds about six point, in the current fiscal year, $6.4 million of our overall operations. That number increased from FY22 to 23, and we're hoping that it stays on that same trajectory. Certainly, if it does, it would be, it would be a boon to the town. It would be, potentially provide some indirect relief to Long Meadow Public Schools as well. So that's sort of the broad fiscal context. And if I could, I'd also like to spend some time talking about the sort of the broader educational landscape. And I've been thinking a lot about this lately, our entire administrative team. I think all educators have, all staff members have, and how the landscape has shifted. Most significantly, it has shifted in the sense that we are challenged to meet the social, emotional, and behavioral and mental health needs of students. And I'm just gonna give you a quick snapshot of this. The purpose of tonight isn't to provide climate data or performance data, but to give us one snapshot in terms of understanding some of the challenges that we are facing in terms of meeting the social, emotional needs of children. This is from the 2022 Long Meadow High School Climate Survey, which is based very much on a national youth risk behavior survey. And you'll see that even pre-pandemic, we saw climbing rates of students reporting depression, climbing rates of students reporting anxiety, and climbing rates of students reporting suicidal ideation, eating disorders, and self-harm. So it saddens me to report this, but I think it's important that we acknowledge and recognize this. And as we think about the budget that is before you tonight and hopefully makes its way to the town, I hope there's some broad understanding that, you know, these are real significant changes. And in my view, anyways, the educational landscape truly has begun to shift. And when we think about, you know, I'm showing you data from Long Meadow High, but I'm sure our elementary and middle administrators would say that they're seeing the same things at play in their schools as well. And when we think about how this plays out and the challenges that it present, these things present for all staff members, for our classroom teachers, for our paraprofessionals, for clerical staff, for everyone, for our administrators, these challenges that students are grappling with manifest themselves in many, many different ways. It manifests themselves in school avoidance perhaps, or in, or in behavioral, or in just generally students who are not available for learning. And so, you know, I think it's important that we kind of recognize and appreciate that this budget that is before you this evening will help us address and meet the social, emotional needs of children, the behavioral challenges, and the mental health needs of students as well. I'd also note that, you know, we're seeing some demographic shifts that we ought to take note of, specifically relating to the number of students that are designated as high-need students by the Department of Education. By high needs, the department means, and I'll ask Sue to clarify if I get this wrong, but specifically students who are designated as low-income or economically disadvantaged, students who are English language learners or had previously been English language learners, or students who, students with disabilities. So those are, we're seeing an increase in the number of students who are, who need to be supported with those needs. And again, these are, these are challenges that our administrators are attempting to meet on a daily basis, our educators, our paraprofessionals, up and down the organization, all staff. And so it's, you know, I think, again, part of the wider context that I just want to make sure that we're being clear in conveying to the, to the committee and the wider community. And we also want to be attentive to all of these things, you know, heightened expectations, require more of us, and cause us to be mindful of staff well-being. And we want to put as much resources and appropriate staffing in our schools as possible so as to obviously support student needs, but also to support the needs of our, of our staff as well. We have been on, I'd say, I wouldn't want to suggest that this is a, you know, something that has been unattended to or not addressed. I think we have been on several years now a journey to expand our capacity to meet the health and wellness needs of students. And, you know, just to, we put together a little chronology of the capacity building work that we've been involved with and how we have had to, you know, try to make investments at the classroom level to support students and to support staff as well. Beginning in 2018, when we expanded school adjustment counseling at the, at all levels, I believe. 2019, we were fortunate to have our first year to be in receipt of the Drug-Free Community Grant. That's $125,000 a year. And we were just renewed for a second five years with that grant recently. So that grant has a, has a really important influence and contributes a lot to this community in terms of helping us develop community-wide prevention and intervention programming. The Long Meadow High PE Department was sort of at the front end of this, going back several years when they saw some indicators and sort of reshaped their work as a wellness department. And so it became a wellness department that was fully dedicated to overall physical education and health programming. And it was also in that year that we introduced another board-certified behavioral analyst, a BCBA. In 2020, we began to credit Beth Nelson for coming up with some of the thought behind this, but we began to redirect Title I funding from some academic needs towards some social, emotional needs. And we added a student support teacher at Wolf Swamp as a Title I school. We introduced life skills programming at the upper elementary level in '21 to ensure that we are engaging students, contributing, giving them that sense of belonging. A career counselor, an additional district nurse, a student support teacher was added at Glenbrook with that Title I funding. So I hope you see, you know, that the strong foundation that we have tried to put in place to address the growing needs in this area. And more recently, in FY22, we have had, we've been very fortunate to have some outstanding registered behavioral technicians who support teachers and students with, helping students get regulated and ready to learn. We applied some grant funding to expand adjustment counseling staffing at the high school. That has since been peeled off, as the grant funding has been peeled off. Given the number of referrals in FY23, we added a school psychologist and this committee was, saw the benefit and value of the RBTs, and we added an RBT to support our work in this current school year as well. So those are some of the positions that we've added. And then beyond that, obviously, the capacity building is tied to professional development, the goals that we set at the district and school level, the community engagement work, the speakers that we brought in for parents and community members. Kudos to our special educators who have been very purposeful in creating in-district programs for students with significant behavioral needs. And additionally, even the, I would say that the implementation of the vision of the graduate has helped us give students that sense of engagement, that sense of belonging, that sense of purpose. And so all of these things have helped kind of build our capacity to help us address the health and wellness needs of students. So again, that's, that's the wider context. And, you know, hopefully, that's helpful information and can help this, this committee and the, and the community make an informed decision on this budget recommendation. I can pause there before we kind of get into some of the nuts and bolts, if it would be helpful, or I can keep going.
Have you guys got any questions so far? All right, keep it going.
And as I, as we, as we begin to talk about the specifics of this budget, would remind anyone viewing at home that this is sort of the first night that we present the budget. Next week, February 7th, there'll be a budget hearing. And then at a subsequent school committee meeting, the, the school committee would take a final vote on the recommendation. So we have some time for consideration and to pull together additional information if it would be helpful. So what are some of the strategic targets that we are hitting or continuing to hit with this recommendation to you tonight? Obviously, our contractual commitments, we, it is more important now than ever to ensure that we have collective bargaining agreements that help us attract and retain excellent staff. And so we have, most of our contracts are in place for the FY24 school year. And so this budget will help us honor those commitments. I'm pleased to say that this budget would include support academic coaches to support specifically our elementary educators. So this committee was, was supportive enough to help us add two math coaches this year using grant funds. And I think we've all seen the, the fine work that they've done and the way that they have helped line up units of study for our elementary educators and the way that they have provided embedded professional development. So this budget recommendation allows us to sustain our three elementary literacy coaches, but also would add two math coaches at the elementary level as well. This position, this budget will, as all budgets should, and as all budgets do, will be responsive to enrollment shifts, and we'll talk about that shortly. I think Long Meadow has long prioritized class size, and we believe that this budget will help us sustain that, that commitment to optimal class size. And we'll show you some data on that shortly. It will help us continue to strategically deploy behavioral supports. I've been really impressed with the way our administrators have worked and put together teams of individuals to provide critical behavioral supports in a multi-tiered way at their buildings. And so this will help us continue with that. Special education services and supports will be addressed with this budget. You'll recall that we had added a second special education supervisor at the elementary level, I should say a third, counting our preschool special education coordinator. So this budget would allow for that to continue. That's a critical support for staff and families as well. We will, with this budget, be able to maintain our strategic commitment to MTSS in terms of the services that are provided, in terms of the programming, in terms of the professional development. MTSS has been a powerful framework for our growth and improvement. And so I'm pleased to say that this budget will allow us to continue that commitment. Support for English language learners, we have seen an increase in the number of students who require EL services. And so this budget will honor that commitment as well. And we have gradually been trying to expose and introduce more students to opportunities in career and technical education as a way to advance the vision of the graduate, as a way to help students identify different paths to success. And so this budget will help us expand those opportunities for students. A quick snapshot, a lot of the budget planning begins with enrollment. And we sit as an administrative team and we review enrollment patterns. We review the number of sections that we'll need at the elementary and at the middle and high level. And this is, this happens, this slide, I'll see if I can make it just a bit bigger here for us. This slide actually comes to us from the MSBA, and they had done a, completed an enrollment study in response to our middle school project. And so it came at a, at a nice time for us. But you'll see that, you know, we have been generally trending downward. It's a little faint on this screen, my apologies, but obviously, anything from 24 to the right on this graph is future data. The red on this is our 912, our high school. The yellow at the bottom, I'm colorblind, I hope it's yellow, I think it's yellow, at the bottom is our, it's grades six through eight. And then the top line on the graph is reflective of elementary enrollment. And it's interesting, you can see that, you know, the, sort of the elementary decline that we saw more years ago is kind of washing through the district. But, you know, elementary has begun to stabilize and there's some signs that our elementary enrollment enrollment might tick up in future years. But you can see that, you know, it's likely that, you know, at the high school and middle level, that that, that we won't see that, we won't experience that same increase for a number of years. So it just gives us some broad understanding of what our 10-year average looks like at the high, middle, and elementary level. And to, to dive a little deeper here, this is our, our current enrollment, not including students who are placed out of district. So you'll see that, you know, our, at the, while we have at the high school classes in the 220s and 230s, you'll see that as you move to the lower grades, that it's more common to see cohorts of students in the 180s, 190s, low 200s. So you can see the, the overall pattern that we are in the midst of. The budget recommendation, we have a slide here that will give you some sense of our projections for elementary class size. And I want to, if I could put a giant asterisk on this entire slide, a giant note of caution for anybody that's looking at this, you know, we're eight months out, right? We're, we're many months away from the start of school, and there's plenty that could shift and change in terms of new registrations, in terms of students that, that leave the community or leave the district. So this is a snapshot based on things right now. You'll see that the, the net effect is that the, compared to the budgeted FY '23 number, in FY '24, we would be proposing that we can run two fewer sections at the elementary level. So where in the current school year, we budgeted for 64 sections at the elementary level, in the coming year, this budget recommendation would include 62 total sections. And you can see how it shakes out across the grades and across the schools. I would note that one of the things that we try to achieve is equity across grade levels, excuse me, across schools at each grade level. And so we hope that we have achieved this. Again, subject to change, subject to revision, as we, you know, do a deeper dive on our enrollment patterns, as we pay attention to springtime registrations, summer registrations. One of the, you know, the biggest unknown for us right now is kindergarten registration. We think, based on census data, based on the projections we've seen from the New England School Development Council, that we can run safely three sections at the kindergarten level in the '23, '24 school year. That's down from a current total of 11 across the three schools. So that's something that we'll have to pay attention to. It's a moving target. Our best projection right now is that we will be down two sections at the kindergarten level in the '23, '24 school year. At the middle level, you can see our projections for class size. Again, a cautionary note here that this is based on existing enrollment. At Glenbrook, for example, in the summer of '22, we saw an increase in the number of students that registered at Glenbrook. So these things change, and, and we are responsive to that. I would say that the other caveat here is that this is a, this is an average evenly distributed across all sections at seventh and eighth grade. I think this committee understands that as students, depending on their choices in math, in foreign language, it could influence the class sizes ultimately. So it never breaks out as evenly as the averages suggest. So on to the recommendation. Again, to start at a high level, you'll see that this recommendation would propose $38,896, $746 from the general fund. We, we are projecting that we will receive just over $3 million in special revenue. I can break that out for you shortly to help us understand what is included in that $3 million in special revenue. For a total budget of $41,943,038, $1.7 million increase over FY '23. Some of us like hard numbers, some of us like percentages. So this gives us some sense of the, of the recommendation in terms of the percentage increase that we would be requesting from the general fund. You'll see that is a, a 4% increase in our request for the general fund from the town of Long Meadow, and an overall increase of 4.36% over FY '23. And you'll see that, you know, again, this, this request is reflective of the cost of doing business nowadays, frankly. It's reflective of the needs of our students and the needs of our staff. And so that, hopefully, we've done a good job of explaining the need or the basis for that $1.5 million increase. And for folks at home, the committee has access to detailed budget documents that we will also make available online.
They're already available.
They're already online, so if anyone wants to sort of do a deeper dive beyond what is in the slide deck, those budget documents are available on the district website. One of the things that, you know, Mr. Maz is a good steward of our money, and he helps us end each fiscal year in healthy shape. And there have been years in the past where we have ended the year with a surplus that has been turned back to the town of Long Meadow. So this slide provides some history on what the turnback has been in recent years. You'll see that it ranges from nearly a million dollars down to around $500. So it really depends on the, the realities and the nuances of each fiscal year. If we break out the, the budget by funding source, you'll see that we are largely dependent on the general fund. Specifically, 92.7% of this proposed budget would come from the general fund, and the remaining would come from Circuit Breaker, Metco Grant, School Choice Receipts, regular and special education grants, mainly the IDA grant, and other grants. You can see that we have exhausted the COVID relief funds that have been critical to us in recent years. Circuit Breaker is a special education relief fund that comes to school districts. It, it funds costly out-of-district placements. So we are projecting a, an increase in Circuit Breaker receipts that will offset some of the out-of-district pressures that we're facing due to the tuition hike and due to the number of students that need those services out of district. In terms of, actually, I'm going to come back to this slide because the, the FTEs might make more sense. After we, after we take a look, this is sort of, we call this where the, sort of, the rubber hits the road type of thing. And I'll start on the right-hand slide, side of this slide. You'll see that there's three big drivers in terms of the additions to this budget, the three big drivers being our contractual obligations, out-of-district tuitions, and utility costs. I want to pause for just one second on out-of-district tuitions. You'll see that this recommendation would include a $682,000 increase in out-of-district tuitions for students who need specialized services out of the district. A large, a significant portion of that increase on line two on the right-hand side is due to the, the rate setting that is done at the state level. So this, this next slide, I'll, I'll come back to the other chart. This next slide gives you some perspective on the, you know, eye-popping increase that we are facing in out-of-district tuitions. And this is a tuition rate that is set by the Operational Services Division, and it is, it has already been, there was, you know, it was in flux for a little while. There was a, this committee took it upon itself to write a letter to OSD advocating against that one-year hike, and, but the tuition rate increase went forward. It's a tuition rate increase that every district in the state will need to face in the coming year. So if we look at what that rate increase means for us, all things being equal, it is a, an increase of $364,868. In a normal year, if you, and, you know, that increase would typically be around $65,000 if you, if you applied a sort of typical 2.5% rate increase, which is probably even more than the average in recent years. So that, that rate increase is a significant driver, it's a significant variable that we need to account for in the FY '24 budget. So $364,000 of the $682,000 is simply attributable to that tuition rate hike that was set by OSD. Utilities is a big driver. You'll see that this budget incorporates the two elementary math coaches. Again, they've done a wonderful job of supporting our elementary educators in helping us roll out the Bridges Math Program with fidelity and with support and by providing embedded PDs. So I'm thankful that this recommendation includes the academic coaches for math. This budget also includes the special education supervisor that committee added to the FY ' '23 budget. It needs to be reflected in the '24 budget because it was added after the, after the '23 budget was voted, and I'm certain Mr. Maz can explain that piece of it, of the accounting better than I, if, if you need help with that. The ELL position, similarly, that was added after the '23 budget was voted, so it needs to be reflected in the '24 budget. Same with the RBT, vocational tuition, we have more students accessing technical education, so that's a, that's an increase to over 23 as well. The, the next line, software supplies, stipends for K-12 curriculum coordinators, these are matters that are under Assistant Superintendent Bertrand's purview. And if you have any questions on that, I'm sure she could explain. Summer custodial services, and teacher at Long Meadow High School, we, we increased, again, after the budget was voted, so it needs to be reflected in the, in the '24 proposed budget. So those are the increases that we are anticipating. The reductions are on the left-hand side of this chart. Specifically, we are looking at a reduction of a, a special education teacher at Center School. We have a specialized program at Center School that we no longer have the need or enrollment for, and Ms. Paris-Gro, I'm sure can explain that in more detail if, if necessary. But we had anticipated, there's a number of students that are moving on and will no longer need the support that, that specialized program provided. In fact, it was this year, we found that the, the program wasn't specifically needed for students. So two math interventionists, the third line on the left-hand side, two math specialists would be dropped from this budget. These are positions that were funded with COVID grant funds, the ESER III funds. And so with the disappearance of the, that ESER III money, we would recommend that, we anticipated that these positions would not be included in the '24 budget. Those positions were super helpful in terms of helping us address COVID learning loss, and we feel like we have the intervention structure in place to, to move forward. The two positions at the elementary level I mentioned earlier are included in this budget. This is a reduction. Primarily, it is a result of the reductions in anticipated kindergarten enrollment and two teachers and the two kindergarten assistants that would have supported those classrooms. So those are enrollment-related reductions. It won't affect, shouldn't affect the overall service that we provide students. Williams Middle School, we had the need for a, to deal with enrollment, a portion of a foreign language teacher. The enrollment points towards us no longer needing that one-fifth world language teacher at Williams. Showed you earlier some of the enrollment projections that we are expecting. Long Meadow High School, based on our, our preliminary analysis of, of the overall enrollment at Long Meadow High School and the potential deployment of staff, we think that we can make a 1.8 FTE reduction at Long Meadow High School. I would say that, you know, the disciplines and departments that would be affected by that is to be determined following high school signups. So we, we want to go through the high school signup process and understand where and if there's an opportunity for that reduction. Good news, legal counseling services, legal settlements, we're seeing some downward trends in those two areas, and we will not have the, we can confidently make reductions to those two lines. Substitute nurses, after-school student tutoring, food service, we're anticipating some reductions, and then some reductions, miscellaneous reductions relating to technology, hardware, software, and some other miscellaneous lines. So again, this slide hopefully is, provides the best snapshot of, you know, where we think we are able to sustain critical investments, where we think we can make additional investments, and where we think we can make some enrollment-related reductions. And so without, you know, one of the things that I think, I know this committee understands is that though we are bringing forward a, a detailed projection, there are many variables that are still undecided or undetermined or unknown. Specifically, we need to keep our eye on, on kindergarten enrollment and the number of sections that we'll need at each school to serve students. We will continue to monitor class size, and even after the budget is voted, potentially, we could make some adjustments to ensure that we're remain, that we are able to maintain our commitment to, to class size. We talked about high school signups, we need to go through that process. Mr. Landers is here, he can, he can talk about the timeline for that, if it would be helpful. This budget does not, I want to be clear, that it does not incorporate the new director of Student and Family Support position. I, I still believe that that is strategically very important to us. I believe that it's a position that will help us coordinate a lot of the capacity-building positions that we added in recent years. But for me, it's important that we take care of all of our needs at the classroom level before we talk about whether or not that's a position that we can commit to fiscally for the '23, '24 school year. I'm hoping that, you know, sort of once the dust settles on the budget and that once we have taken care of, you know, our first-level needs, that, that this is a position that we can bring back forward to the school committee. Most of our collective bargaining agreements are in place, but we still have some collective bargaining before us, so that's another budget variable that we want to account for. Special education services and programs, you know, we, we obviously need to align services and programs with the specific individual needs of students, and sometimes that, you know, requires some adjustment long after the budget is voted, so that's something that we need to keep our eyes on. You know, we, you, you see that there are, there's an there are, there's an increased number of students that require out-of-district services. Our inclination is, is always to try to create and build programs in district to serve students here in Long Meadow as, as, as best we can. And if we can do that effectively, sometimes that does require additional investments after the budget is voted. When, when you're able to create these in-district programs, sometimes you're able to avoid future costs, but sometimes there are some initial startup costs associated with creating specialized services for special education students. The school committee will decide, I believe it's sometime in March, on school choice in Metco enrollment. And so those are tied to revenue as well. And then there's a number of fee-based services relating to transportation and preschool and athletics that we need to account for as well. Annually, the school committee sets fees associated with those services. So there's a number of, you know, the, we are very, very early in the budget process. Despite the detailed documents that are in front of you, we always have to be responsive to changing enrollment, changing need. And those things occur right up to and well beyond the start of the, of the coming school year. So with that, next steps is the public hearing. So this is the community's first opportunity to hear the recommendation. The community is, is welcome to come to that public hearing on the 7th. The school committee is slated to vote on the budget on the 14th of February, Valentine's Day. And at some point annually, we report on that recommendation to the Select Board or Finance Committee. And then ultimately, it's considered at an annual town meeting in May. So there's a number of steps still in front of us, lots of variables to pin down, lots of costs to identify, and, and the revenue picture is not crystal clear either. So with that, we're all happy to answer any and all questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That was a lot of info. So wherever your question comes in and/or clarifying information, Jamie, we'll stop with you.
Under 25 slides, just for, you know, that's, Mr. Mazza limited me to 25. He said, no worries. He even, he even holds the line on that.
I'm tired. I have to talk. So I, I just have a couple initial kind of general questions here, more for Tom. The attrition number is just a plug number rate at this point or just what we know with regards to who's potentially retiring this year?
Yeah, I would say a substantial amount of that number is recognized in FY '23's budget. There are some expected changes in FY '24, but minimal compared to previous years.
Got it. Got it. And then just a second initial question, if that's okay. I have three total. So this out-of-district tuitions, I mean, that's, that's huge, right? Do we think that's, do we have a projection of what the following year is going to be? Is this, is, are we going to be up against this every year? Have they told us what's kind of coming our way? I mean, I, I've seen this across the entire state. They're doing this everywhere. You know, it's not just pupil services, but they're saying, I'm seeing three years out.
Economy stays where they are. We may see percentages high, hopefully not this high, but maybe higher than what the average has been for the last five years.
Should we be continuing with letters to them? Because I'm, I'm thinking like, as a follow-up to this, I know this is this year now, but this is probably coming the next two or three years. I mean, that, that's, that's, I mean, I, I can't imagine having to deal with that three years in a row. I mean, I think we should start pushing on it before they start. It's, it's, it's gonna come potentially. I mean, 14% doesn't, you know, it, it doesn't jive with what I'm seeing. You know, 40 is more consistent. So over a course of a period of time. So I think we should be pushing back on that, you know, even though they kind of ignored us, you know, or said, thank you, but no thanks. We should keep pushing on that, in my opinion. And then just the last one, because I've asked it three years in a row now. I look at all of these numbers from Blueberry to Center to Wolf Swamp. Why are we not making this make more sense? There's people who live right on the line. I still just, it doesn't make sense to me. Like, you know, you have, you have a chance to make less kids in the classroom for, if you used all of these together and blended them. Why don't we move kids from one school to the other? I don't get it. Yeah. I mean, same thing with, you know, even, I, I don't know if middle school's too, the high school's the high school, but the center, it just doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, I get the parents might not be happy, but wouldn't they be happier if they had a smaller class size for their child?
So, and, and when you say move them from specifically meaning?
I mean, the school boundaries are very odd.
Gotcha.
Right? Like, you could be living next to somebody and their child goes somewhere else. I mean, you, I just look at all these numbers. Some of the class sizes are awesome. Some of them aren't so great. If my child was in it, I just, I don't know. It's just my idea. I, I, I get, I mean, I got the same comment three years in a row, so I know what to, but I, I just look at this going like, you know, in, you know, second, third, fourth, first, second, third, fourth grade, the lower the class size, I'm assuming, the better. I've never been a first, second, or third-grade teacher, but I've coached kids. You have 20 kids, you know, and you're coaching, much harder than 15 or 14 or 11. You know, it's way easier to manage. You, it's, it's, it just works better. So I don't know. I still kind of, I, I don't know why we don't do that. I just don't get it, in my opinion. You don't have to answer it. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Tiana?
I was just gonna try and attempt to answer Jamie's question. No, just because I'm, I mean, I'm an elementary educator and I, I, like, I, I see y'all sitting there and I know the cultures that you've created at your building. Some of you are obviously newer to us than others. So like, Jamie, I'm thinking if I was a parent and I was three years into, and center school, of course, is my beloved, but if I was three years in and had those relationships and in that culture, I might say, I don't care that my kid's in a bigger class. I, I want, I want Mrs. Hutton and I want those teachers as my, you know, I, I think that's just my opinion.
I agree with you, and I kind of have the same mind, but I might also think the reverse. Thank God I can get, we won't pick on the side. Out of her principle, there's, there's always two sides of every story. So where it's not a good fit for one family, there's a good fit for the other family. I just look, I don't know. I just look at, I know it's probably a pipe dream, but it doesn't make any sense to me logically. So there's always a, there's two sides to every story. So, but I get what you're saying. That was it. Thanks. Cool.
Yep. Kevin?
New topic. Marty, I wonder if you could talk to us a little bit about longer-term the, the middle school project, right? I, I could imagine folks thinking like, hey, we've got this middle school project that is going to cost a bunch of money upfront, but you know, at some point in the future, we might hopefully realize some savings in terms of having two schools combined into one. I, I don't expect you to have those numbers. I guess I'm just sort of curious, like, at what point, if the project goes the way we hope, will we have potentially one school and not two? Is that four years out, five years out? I mean, I guess, I think it might help folks think about budgeting and what the future might look like if we have an idea of what that timeline might be.
Yeah. You know, certainly, I'd agree 100%. There would be some efficiencies you'd gain in a combined setting, no doubt. I'd say so much of the middle school timeline depends on, you know, how efficient we are with our, with our feasibility study, with our local approvals, and how quickly the MSBA responds to whatever the results of that feasibility study are. I've sort of conservatively been telling community members that it could be the fall of '27 or the fall of '28.
Thank you. And if I could jump in with one more. On my sheet, it's page eight, so it's probably like slide 16 or something like that.
Is it this?
Yeah. So I, I just wonder if you could help us understand the number in red, because obviously that kind of jumps off the page, because it looks like, you know, 15 to 22, the percent on the right seems pretty reasonable and it makes some sense. And then the last two years, it's like things are all over the place. So I, I wonder if you could just remind us or, you know, tell us, like, why did that number happen? Because that clearly influences the number that comes after it.
I'll, if I could, I'll, I'll kick that over to our accountant over here.
Yeah, well, this fiscal year specifically, which is FY '23, reflected on that chart, represents the reduction of COVID grants, specifically ESER I, II, and III grants that we received and were budgeted as part of the FY '22 budget. So we saw a substantial reduction in what we would call those special revenues. Knowing that they were one-time funds, we tried to be strategic with the investment, but the reduction, the overall reduction in those revenues exceeded the total increase of our request for general fund for this fiscal year. So that's why you see the negative, the overall total number of our budget went down. The amount that the town appropriates to the schools increased.
And again, we have those federal grants for two years in a row?
Yeah, they were primarily, they were over a number of years. There were multiple grants. There was some COVID prevention funding. There was some, as I said, ESER grants that made, made up a bulk of it. Most of them were in the FY '22 budget. That is when we saw the greatest impact of those COVID funds in terms of the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna pause just for one second. Julie has joined us. So Julie, we know you're on the call with us, so if you did have a question or anything else at any point, if someone can just keep an eye on the screen to let us know if, can you turn your camera on, raise your hand?
I have to allow her to unmute herself.
Hold on one moment, Julie. While we're letting that happen, Jamie?
Yep. I'm just gonna need some help from you, Tom. But can you just, I just hear a lot of people jumping on the call too, just to kind of reiterate. This 1.223 million, and I think Dr. O'Shea kind of gave a general overview to it, but this is everything that we're contractually obligated to at this point. A few are still tentative, that are still being worked on. But that represents step, you know, lane changes as well as COLA increases. Can you just tell us what that is as a percentage, so everybody understands what percentage that is as a salary increase for all the employees of the, all 400 and whatever, 64? Was it 464 or 459?
Yeah, currently we're at 467-ish.
But just so everybody understands, you know, what our COLA and our lane changes are going up, just so they understand. Because I think everybody realizes kind of, you know, who's currently, you know, employed or working or is reading the news kind of understands what's going on and kind of where we're at as a community.
Yeah, I'd say that's like a three and three-quarter percent, 3.75% increase in terms of the overall.
The total, the total budget, which ends up being 1.223 million dollars. So stuff that we're already obligated and have laid out for the next couple of years. So just wanted to make sure everybody kind of understood that. So we had no control over that one. And then the, the next two, you know, we really aren't in control of either at this point. So the utilities, maybe. I guess if we keep lights off more, maybe we can manage that. But I don't think we can make it go away, I guess is my point. So, so just wanted to make sure everybody knew those percentages.
Other questions? Tiana?
Thank you, everybody. I know it's been said before, but thank you for, for all this. Superintendent, I'm, I'm wondering about the, like, the 14, and, and y'all know that I'm not like the numbers person, so I'm gonna try and articulate this as best I can. The 14% out-of-district, which I find is disgusting. I don't know if that's an appropriate word to use or not. I just think that's, when we're, when we're seeing patterns of increased high-needs kids, and then you're gonna throw 14% increase on us, I just think that's absolutely disgusting. And you're shame on me for not paying attention that it actually happened. I thought we were still kind of waiting to see. So I think that's, I think it's disgusting. But when we're talking about that, Superintendent, and you're talking about the possibility of, and Nicole, this is where you're gonna, we're talking about the possibility of creating in-district programs that could meet the needs so that we wouldn't have to go out-of-district and face this 14% increase for some kids. And I know you don't have a crystal ball, but like, is there any feasibility that some of those programs could be created for the fall? So that we could lessen that 364,000?
Yeah. I'd say, and Nicole, Paris-Grohl, our new Special Education Director, feel free to jump in. She's with us.
Sorry, Nicole.
I'd say the decision, it, it starts with students' IEPs and our obligation to educate students in the least restrictive environment. And so if that least restrictive environment is, is one that we can provide here, we're always interested in doing that. And so whether it's a, whether it's a specialized service or a program, but that's something that we will, you know, we're always evaluating, you know, throughout the entire academic year and into the summer to, to, you know, help us understand if there are services or programs that we can offer in district. It's good for kids. It's, it's obviously would help us avoid some of these out-of-district costs as well. Too early to say exactly what, if any, services could be offered in district to help us avoid those costs. But I know that's something that Nicole is regularly reviewing with her administrators, with her special ed supervisors and across the district, so.
And so Nicole's, and thank you, Superintendent, so.
If you could do us a favor, thank you, just come forward, because otherwise no one at home will give you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you very much.
So just, so you inventory the needs of the kids, and then you inventory what's already happening, and then potentially, there could be something new, something new created to either bring back kids into district or not have to deal with that 14%?
Yes, constantly. So I think Superintendent O'Shea said the shifting educational landscape, right? So we're constantly annually revisiting placements, gathering updates that help us guide and determine who and when we can transition kids back into district, right? Because the goal is to meet students' needs in the least restrictive environment, of course. And so when we think about that, we've seen increases in social-emotional needs as well as some other needs as well. So right now, it seems that the social-emotional need is, is big. And we need to be thoughtful about upcoming, you know, upcoming needs of students and how that's changing, rather than just create programs that are not sustainable that support one or two or a small number of kids. We have to think a little more globally than that and repurpose or reallocate and be prepared to change and think a little bit long-term, not just from year to year. And so we're in the process of being really thoughtful about the students that we have currently in district, ones that we have outplaced, and then looking a little farther down the road and see what's coming, coming our way from some of the lower elementary grades.
Awesome. Thanks, Nicole. I'm sorry again, but.
No, that's, I think that's why I'm here. So I'm, I'm glad to help. I'm glad to come with you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, absolutely.
Other questions or thoughts?
I have a question. Well, going back to one of the early slides, expanding capacity to support students' health and wellness, I was just wondering if these, what is the, what is a student support teacher?
The, so I think Beth Nelson is, is on our call. And Nicole Allen from Glenbrook is here as well. So it's the student support teacher, student support specialist. Maybe paint the picture for how that position helps us address SEL needs and behavioral needs. And it's, it's been a challenge for you because the position has been vacant for, for a portion of the year, correct?
Well, well, we hired somebody, but she's out on maternity leave, and we just finally got someone in there. Anyways, a student support specialist or student support teacher is, you know, it goes through the MTSS process. We have literacy lab, we have math lab, and you know, we were so focused on those for so long, but obviously, like, most of the stuff that's shared today, you know, we do have a lot of social-emotional needs. And we felt that having someone to tent that, and I know Beth, who's on the call, she had first originally created this program at Wolf Swamp, and then we did as well at Glenbrook because they're both title-one schools. So what this teacher does is push in. So, what this teacher does is push in and pull out in classrooms and works with kids. You know, some kids just need to get organized, just organized for the day, or some that just need check-ins, others that, when the teacher goes into the classroom, is working specifically with certain kids who just need that extra support. You know, we go through the five competencies, the Castle competencies, and work with kids, and, you know, some kids need different things. So, there's kids that may just need math lab, there's kids that just may need lit lab, but then there's also kids that don't need necessarily those two, but just need to have a little support getting back on track, or some check-ins throughout the week, or, you know, maybe push in and pull out for some students, if that makes sense.
So, do they have a caseload?
Yes, yep.
It's one of the other, and Beth, feel free to jump in if you'd like. One of the other factors is, we haven't talked about it a lot, and it'll probably come up with, around the time that it's time to revise our handbooks. There's a new student discipline law that is in place that really requires us to put in place restorative practice, and, you know, no longer can we simply send students without any level of intervention to a internal suspension room, and no longer can we simply externally suspend or send a student home who needs to get regulated, the obligation, and it's a good thing, but it, it puts, you know, there's a lot that we have to figure out. The, the expectation is that we provide some interventions to students so that they can get emotionally regulated or get behaviorally regulated to get back to a place where they're ready to learn, so those student support specialist positions. I expect that you'll, you'll hear more about positions like that in the, in the future, frankly, because all, all districts right now are wrestling with that new student discipline law and figuring out ways to engage students in restorative ways, so that, that, that's a piece of the puzzle for us. Beth, how'd we do? I know this is something that was near and dear to you.
No, I think you all captured it pretty well. It was just really the response to being more proactive rather than a reactive response to students needing support. And I've been away from elementary for a few years now, but oftentimes, it's our kindergarten or even first graders who are so disregulated, and they need that extra person, you know, a walking break might be extremely helpful for them, but they need a support person to, to help them with that. So, that was where it really might, might need, our need grew, and then the vision and the actual deployment of the position evolved and has really become something very beneficial.
Thanks, Beth.
Want to follow up?
Yeah.
Is it a Unit A position? Yes.
Unit A, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it. Other thoughts or comments or questions related to the budget? Shiana?
I was debating on saying anything, I'm just going to say it though, as we go into the public hearing next week, like, everybody in this room obviously is an educator, is invested in, you know, education, cares about education. I could see on the call, it's mostly teachers and involved parents who understand the value of education. I think this is the most complicated, I've only been on the school committee for four years, this is the most complicated budget, to me, the most scary budget, and I feel like, I feel like part of the problem right now is, Superintendent, you talked about the changing educational landscape. We all know the changing fiscal landscape. I think there's a big piece there that also goes with education and educators just kind of keep getting knocked down by society that doesn't understand the value of education and educators, and so I think it's important for all of us, even though we live it and we breathe it every day, to make sure that we're advocating for education and that we need money to support education, because, you know, if you're not a parent, you live in Long Meadow, if you're not a parent, you don't have kids in the school system, you might be thinking, why do I want to vote for more money? Why do I want to raise my taxes? Whatever the case may be. And I, I think it's just important that we all kind of think about advocating in ways that we are creating human beings, we're helping develop human beings that are going to become, you know, maybe you don't have a kid in the school system, but, you know, that kid's going to grow up and be, you know, your arthritis doctor, or, you know, the, the artist that helps you, you know, decorate your house, whatever the case may be. I think we just need to make people who are non-educators, who are not in this room, who are not the educators that I saw up on the screen, aware of the fact that now, more than ever, and I hate that it comes down to money, but now, more than ever, money is important for supporting education, and we just need to do a little more, like, rah-rah education, and it's, you know, the foundation for life. Again, I'm preaching to the literally choir here, but I think as we go into the, think about the public hearing next week, I don't know who else is out there in the world watching this or, or going to even go on, you know, YouTube and, and watch it, but the people who maybe are on the peripheral side of our school system need to be made aware that when it comes down to it, we're asking for more money, but it's because we're developing these positive human beings that are going to impact whoever you might be, you might be a grandma, you might be, or you might be somebody that just doesn't even have anybody connected to the school system, but eventually, the human beings that we're helping develop are going to be out there in your world. So, I just think, however we can, we need to advocate for education.
But good, I appreciate the advocacy and the support, you know, it, it's wonderful to hear. I, I think this, this will require advocacy, this will require explanation, because we're asking a lot from, from the town, and so, hopefully, there's, you know, we, we can advocate and explain what our educators need and what our staff needs and what our students need. One of the factors that I, you know, contemplated putting on the slide is, you know, around the shifting educational landscape goes to what you're talking about, and that is the educator pipeline, and, and I think, you know, we're all worried about the, what seems to be the narrowing pipeline and the, and the smaller applicant pools and the number of vacancies that we're dealing with, and so it is critical for us to, you know, continue to support staff, to make sure that they have the resources and that we're building the capacity to, to support kids and adults as well.
All right.
One more general question back to my numbers game over here.
Sure.
So, we're adding two math coaches, and I've never taught in an elementary school, go back on that, but we're adding two math coaches, but like, you look at Wolf Swamp, second grade, the number of kids per classroom, does it make more, like, I, I guess my question would be, a challenge would be, like, does it make more sense to spend that money on reducing some of these? I mean, that's the highest of all three elementary schools, grade-wise. Why would it be second grade? Like, that doesn't make, that doesn't make sense to me. So, my question really challenges is why not spend that hundred-and-seventy thousand on reducing some of those versus math specialists? I don't know, I, I, that'd be my kind of, having the highest being a second grade would be, I don't know, intuitively, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I think, and, and that's, that's the purpose of the, the hearing tonight and, and, or the recommendation tonight, and the purpose of the hearing next week is to put that in front of the committee and the community, and ultimately, you know, that's a decision that, that the committee is, that the committee can make, and it's certainly, class size is, has long been a priority of this community, so I understand.
It's always been something we focused on, so I was just looking at that, and my first initial was obviously one harebrained idea, but, you know, moving them from school to school, but obviously, that's probably not going to work, but you look at that and you go, okay, we're going to spend money here, but, you know, I'm going in looking at second grade, being that the highest out of every single grade of all three schools seems.
One of the comforting things is I, I think Mr. Masal always puts us in a position to respond to unanticipated costs, so, you know, if any of these numbers move in a way that makes us uncomfortable, you know, creates a unwieldy situation, I, I'm hoping that we're able to respond to it.
Can I ask, yes, I just wanted to comment about instructional coaches, which I feel very strongly about, and I, to Jamie's point, I think it is often, the work of instructional coaches is often not seen by community members, because they're, you know, teachers who are not in, in a classroom full-time with their own students necessarily assigned to them, but those roles are, in my opinion, very critical to protecting the investment that we've made in our curriculum program, because it ensures curriculum alignment, it supports teachers in rolling out the curriculum. So, I think it's one of those things where, you know, you have to balance, is, is class size the thing? Is ensuring that our curriculum alignment and rollout the thing? You know what I mean? So, I, I just wanted to point out that, like, my heart dropped a little, Jamie, when you said, when you pointed out the instructional coaches, I feel very strongly that they make a really big impact when it comes to curriculum and instruction, and so I just felt compelled to say that.
Shiana?
Can I just follow up to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because Jamie, I had the same question, I was talking to Superintendent, had the same question, but then I remembered the presentation by the, the principals and the math coaches, yeah, and just, and, and just what Mary just said, so, but I did have the same, I was like, wait, what? I couldn't remember, I was like, did we already vote on that? So, so, yeah, same question, Jamie, but Mary just, you know, summed it up, but I do remember that presentation, and like, we spent a lot of time and effort on the bridges?
The bridges, right, yeah.
And that's what we're talking about, right? The curriculum is the bridges?
The math coaches, yes, yeah, and rolling out the curriculum, and, you know, they're developing a really strong curriculum, and we have to, I love your developing, you know, humans, we have to develop academically sound humans too, and that means they have to be able to read and to write and do math, and so our coaches are integral to that, both our literacy coaches and math coaches. I agree very well, Sam.
Other thoughts, comments, or questions? Julie? Just checking in. It looks like you might be unmuted.
I'm, I'm
There you are, okay.
Trying to figure out how to get off mute, but I'm, I'm okay for questions for now, this discussion is really helpful.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, well, seeing no other questions, thank you very much for the time and energy that has gone into putting all of this information together, and also for the time and energy that goes into helping answer all of our questions throughout the course of the week. Just a quick reminder of our next steps, I know that was on the slide before, but we'll just reiterate again that the next step is the public hearing, which will be next Tuesday, February seventh here, and we really encourage the public to come out and ask questions and reach out to us for more information related to this budget. The week after that, on the fourteenth, the school committee will vote for the budget, so that will give us some more time to reflect on that community engagement and questions and talk to all of you and everybody over here, we appreciate you coming out tonight as well. And moving forward or looking further ahead to May ninth, which will be our annual town meeting, when we return to the budget and the town budget as a whole and see how that fits in. So, lots of opportunities still for engagement, and really encourage the community to come out and speak out and talk to us about what your questions and concerns are over the next few weeks. All right.
Thank you to our admin team.
Yes, thank you very much.
We'll send them on their way.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you for coming out. I think, Mr. Landers, you are staying with us for the next component of our evening.
Mrs. Stay after.
Thank you. If you want to join us. We are moving on now to the Long Meadow High School Educational Opportunities booklet.
All right, we can quickly turn it over to Principal Landers for a review of the proposed changes to the LHS Program of Studies. This is an annual visit by the high school principal and will require a vote at the conclusion of his explanation.
Good evening.
So, pretty straightforward proposals for you to consider tonight on our Program of Studies. Two courses, two new proposed courses, one which we chatted about here a year ago, when we promised to invest in three new courses, two last year and one this year, so that's the fulfillment of that, and just some updated, either additions in world language, or, and then just some cleanup and improvement, hopefully improvement, improving some of the languages in the language in the Program of Studies. The two new courses is an English for honors, that's a senior English, we had chatted about that, so students would have, seniors would have the option to take four levels. Before, we had English for AP, we had College Prep One, College Prep Two, this gives, this gives four, both in honors and in AP. And basic guitar and piano, because we want to encourage and invite and capture students to play music that we're not capturing yet at this time. We, we've heard anecdotally that there's some students who, we know that there are students who play in, play music in, in garage bands or play, or interested but are intimidated because the music program is good, and we've always tried to have opportunities for, for new musicians as well as accomplished musicians. So, it's a semester-long class, we would run as many sections as sold, it's really if the students are excited about it and sign up for it. If it passes tonight, we could have one, one semester class, we could have two, we could have three, depending on, on if the students are interested in that, and that's it for the two new classes. And I hope my explanations about the language are pretty self-explanatory, but for people at home, World Language Department chairperson and department teachers asked if we could add the terms either novice, novice intermediate, intermediate, or advanced, in addition to all the information we offer about the various world language courses, because that, that matches what their National Council, American Council on Teaching of Four Languages uses. So, that was the suggestion, and we brought it forward as a proposal. And then, the NESDEC report that we all got a copy of made some suggestions. I went through that over winter break, and I just, I picked what I thought was low-hanging fruit. I picked what I thought was if there was, if there was anything from cleaning up languages, we had some languages in there about employees who had retired, we had some languages, language in there about practices that we don't, that are out of date. I, I picked out a few things, if you, if you look back to the, to the spirit of the NESDEC audit, we were asked to, my words, not the reports, make sure that we're being welcoming and challenging to students who want to take some courses, so I tried to do that, replace the existing language with more welcoming language, if applicable, and just tried to, tried to update some language. There's an example of AIDS, AIDS is an antiquated term in education, so we replaced it with paraeducator. So, those are the, the four asks, pretty straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we ask for, ask for your support so we can put these into the Program of Studies booklet, and the timeline for whatever we do will be, we will be inviting the current eighth graders up to LHS on Tuesday after February break. They come on up, they visit with us, we give them an overview, we teach them about the opportunities, we introduce them to the department chairpersons, and then we visit and welcome their families that, two days later, I think it's March second this year, and then they get right into scheduling, and then the ninth, current ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders will follow after that in the few, first few weeks of March. So, that's it, if, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we ask you to consider those four proposals.
Wonderful, thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Mary?
Thank you. I, I appreciate the, the work that you did, especially with the NESDEC audit report, and also, I, you know, you mentioned the low-hanging fruit, like, because I think that that audit makes some really big suggestions.
Yep.
And, you know, we will have a curriculum sub coming up, but there, you know, it's, it's sort of like we got our audit, but we need to have a plan and how we're going to move forward with some of the larger changes that, or at least be reflective about and consider some of the larger changes that were suggested. So, I feel like I'm in a position where I, I am so appreciative that you made the changes that you were able to make essentially in isolation without opening this up to a real overhaul of a lot of overhaul of a lot of structures that have been in place for a long time. But in continuing, and, you know, I know that there this is timely and it needs to happen, but in continuing to approve a program of studies that isn't making those changes, there's it's a, I just, I'm in that space, I guess, of not really knowing what to do. And I've been reflecting on this a lot, you know, knowing that this was coming up. And I guess I was just curious if anybody has any comments about that or feelings about that. Because we we would essentially be approving a program of studies that hasn't really considered all the recommendations that were made by the NESDEC audit, and I feel uncomfortable with that, yet it's it's necessary to do this in a timely way because you need the program of studies to schedule for next year, so.
I could say something, and then I'll be quiet and let you guys speak. So I think it's interesting, the verbiage that the Dr. Bodett used. He changed it from suggestions or proposals to opportunities. I mean, that's really a dialogue that has to be talked about. There are eleven, I think, that he made. I think this is a no-brainer first step. I think a second step is to go through and streamline the book. The book is, I think it's a great book. I think it reflects a lot of opportunities for students, but we've, it's been so dynamic. We've added, I mean, just in the last 10 years, I think we've added something like 22 new opportunities. That's awesome. But it gets a little unwieldy. So I think one of his big suggestions was to kind of streamline the verbiage. This is what an honors course is. This is what a AP course is. And then not list AP English, AP History, AP Science, but then just list the courses. I think that's the next big step to make it more user-friendly, more easily readable and followable. And then the others are, you know, things that that have to be a wider dialogue. I'll give you one example, then I'll be quiet. One of the suggestions he makes is to have an honors and an and a AP at every level and and value those different. My experience as principal would say that we would actually, in in this community, in our school, I think, that would result in more students taking AP courses. But we've talked a lot about this at this committee level about not recognizing the importance of AP courses, but not over not over prioritizing them. So I think that every lever we pull, I think we've got to think about the intended and the unintended consequences. And then the other big one is, I mean, we have to have a larger discussion. Does this, you know, does this committee and does this community want to have honors, AP, and college prep and not have a differentiation between college prep one and two? And that's a bigger dialogue, I agree. That's, I think those are the big ones. But I think, I hope, this is a good first step. I think the next step, without any real controversy, is to kind of streamline the book. So anyway, those are my thoughts, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, build on that. You said it well, the idea of having some overarching descriptors of of the levels that you're talking about. I think that makes a lot of sense. Even that's a big task, but it 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 more works towards creating clarity across departments and for users of that program of studies. And I think it's a fair question, Mary, that, you know, we need to sort of come up with a game plan, a, you know, a roadmap for, you know, what we're going to do with that NESDEC report. The the other thing that Tom has reminded me of a few times is that we're also anticipating a final report from NIESC following their visit. Is that in May we're getting that?
We're gonna, we we anticipate that by mid-March.
In March, okay. So that that could inform this work as well.
I hope it, I hope it does. I hope they're looked at in, in, you know, juxtaposed and all considered, absolutely.
So we can work on that roadmap for you. That that makes a lot of sense.
I want to build off of one of the things Mary was saying. First off, to just say thank you for bringing this forward and appreciate the opportunity for some new course proposals. That sound excellent, and I know there's a lot of work that goes into developing those, so appreciate that. I also like the focus on some language changes to include more inclusionary language or to adapt to more inclusionary change, language is is important. And to that end, I'm wondering if one of the other things that we could maybe begin to have conversations about as we move forward with future programs of study and decisions related to that is the question of prerequisites, particularly with connections to specific grades at prior levels or recommendations from teachers, et cetera. As somebody who's taught AP and honors level of classes, my approach to that has always been that the question should rarely be, can you take an AP or honors level class? But will you? Will you be interested in pushing that challenge? Are you interested in taking that? And so I do agree that it's very important for us to be very clear about like what the course requirements might be, that honesty in course descriptions. But I I do wonder if prerequisites are are maybe another barrier that we might want to consider
Yep.
adaptations to as we look to more inclusivity in our course descriptions.
It's a it's a good discussion to have. I love, I've always loved the fact that at the end of the day, no matter what recommendation by a teacher has been made, that Long Meadow Public Schools has always honored the waiver. I love that. And I think, no matter what, I love, you know, the discussion about prerequisites is an important one. And I also want to say that, just to clarify, so everybody knows, that at the end of the day, even if a teacher, if you don't meet a prerequisite, language is a little different. You can't jump over and say, I'm not going to take Spanish two. I'm going to jump to Spanish eight. I want to be upfront. But generally, the student and the family have the last say, and it should be that way. But I I agree, we've tried to kind of liberalize, for lack of a better word, or make it easier and decrease some of the prerequisites over the last few years, but it's it's a it's a discussion that should keep going. I agree.
Wonderful. I think I saw another hand. Oh, different topic, same topic?
Different. Go ahead.
Different. Mary, did you have something on the same?
No, I'll just save that.
Okay.
Well, no, then go ahead, Mary.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, and thank you, Tom, and everybody that worked on this. I just, so last year, there was the creation or the proposal for the juniors' honors history and
And English.
Right, so so but I I'm, I have a point, I promise. So it was put out there. Children were excited about it, including my daughter. It wasn't really, it was kind of like a, it was a little bit confusing. It wasn't kind of pushed or marketed very well, and that ended up not happening. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that doesn't happen with this, like.
So we offered two new classes last year. One ran, one only three students signed up for it. So we did not run the honors U.S. History. It's still in the book, though. We're going to try to run it for next year.
Okay. And I guess that's what I'm saying, like, there wasn't enough, because I think more people would have signed up for it if it had been a little.
So I did some digging. I called children down without trying to intimidate them, and I said, what what gives? You know, all the, not all, but several of the students who signed up for AP. And their their candid answer was, and I think we had had this, some of this discussion here, if they considered it a very similar course. And I think the AP name, because it was valued the same, they thought they'd get a little bit more bang for their buck on on their transcript to apply to college. But it's it's a good class. It would have allowed us to kind of not be on that AP fast train and kind of take a deeper dive. So it's remains in the book, and I hope that it runs. The English three honors ran. We had 20, I think we have 25 students who signed up for that class, and that's a class. And I I hope that this is going to run.
Yeah, so I just, the only reason I bring it up is I don't want this to happen with this because this is, you know, like, like, because that was, like, yeah, so, thank you.
But if we get any kind of reasonable number, we, Superintendent and I, we talk, we we have that dialogue, and then we want to run a course that has some some interest, as long as we can defend the numbers.
Yeah, and I think with the description of the the levels, and I I just think they're, yeah, description of the levels, but also some marketing around, you know, the
Lori Snyder, Heather Pollard did a great job. They 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 sold it. They went into U.S. History. They went into sophomore classes. But you're right, the numbers weren't there. And what that, and what I found out was what I explained, like, kids were on the fence and they were asking for better or worse. And that's, we come back, do we want more AP courses or do we want more honors? I think that it is important for us to continue the conversation, recognize the importance of AP classes, but not continue to grow them. I I brought you no new AP course in the last few years without bringing, asking one to come off the table. I want to continue to do that, and I'm happy to discuss that, you know, at a later time if you if you if people need more explanation.
Thank you.
Further discussion and/or motions?
I move that the school committee approved the Long Meadow High School 2324 Educational Opportunities booklet as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or thoughts? Can you remind us, what is the timeline that happens next?
So the timeline is eighth graders will come up. They're doing work with their school counselor and teachers. In the month of February, they'll come up and see us. They'll visit the high school. They'll get more information on the Tuesday right after February break. Their parents will be invited in for eighth grade family night two, two days later. I think it's March 2nd. And then they go back, and they are signing up right after that, right when it's fresh in their mind. And then current ninth, 10th, and 11th graders are going to start right after that. So they're going to start the first, really the first in that second week of March. And we go through March, those first guidance, school counselors, students sign up online, but we want to also have a face-to-face. We want those students to make sure they they have some face time with their school counselor. So we should, we hope to be done completely, at least with enough numbers to make good decisions by, I want to say mid-March, but it's more like March 20th, where we'll have numbers. We'll have some stragglers, we'll have some, we we reach out to private schools in Long Meadow, religious schools in Long Meadow at that time as well. We want to capture those, but we'll have a good, we'll have enough to have a dialogue by mid, certainly by the third week of March. And then we, then we'll see how things are shaking out, but that's the timeline for signups.
Okay. Any additional questions or thoughts?
I'm just, I I am going to, I appreciate all your efforts. I really, without knowing what the next steps are going to be, is not on view, or I just feel like I can't vote yes to this at this point. So I just wanted to clarify why I will vote no when we vote in. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other thoughts? All right, we'll move to a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
No.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Jill? Or Julie? I don't even know what I'm saying. Sorry. Saw something else on the screen. Sorry. Okay, Ed, yes for me as well. We look forward to continuing this conversation for sure in curriculum upcoming. And thank you.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate you coming out tonight.
All right, guys, thanks so much.
Great evening.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward, we are headed into administrative reports. We're going to swap around a little bit tonight, and I'll start us off. And then we will head to Dr. Shea and our assistant superintendents after that. I first off wanted to take a moment to say a thank you to our school and town employees and officials who worked hard the last several weeks on completing the maintenance and capital planning report that was needed for the next milestone in the Massachusetts School Building Authority process. We're really excited to see the middle school building project continue moving forward, and we're grateful for the time and energy that has gone into that. We have talked a lot about our budget tonight, so I think we know where we are at the moment and appreciate the opportunity to hear feedback from the community. So again, just to reiterate that we can all be reached not just at the meeting next week, but also via email. And we encourage folks to reach out. I also wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that the last week has brought with it some additional difficulties and challenges, both in our community and nation as a whole. And to just really say that we appreciate and acknowledge the extra supports that have been offered by all of our school employees and our school families. So thank you for your support during this time and the care that you have shown for our students in the midst of these challenges. And then a couple of other notes. First, to just say again that our hearts and thoughts are with the Rivera family as they go through this incredibly difficult time, and the the community, you know, is with is with them. And also to remind folks that there is currently a fund being raised for the Weldon family from the fire that happened with their family a few weeks ago. If you are an LHS family, then you received a link to that fundraiser in your email. And encourage people to check that out if they are able to help support the Weldon family in this difficult time that they are having. That is all for me this evening. I will turn to you.
Sure. Yeah, a couple matters, just a little deeper dive on the the two incidents that last week we had a personnel matter at Wolf Swamp and a safety situation at Glenbrook. And sorry for the disruption that that created, and I'm especially worried about the sense of unease and and worry that it might generate in staff and students. And frankly, events like this, you know, probably weigh heavily on the minds of of staff and students and really part of that shifting educational landscape that we talked about earlier and and why we need to be so attentive to the needs of wellness, needs of staff and students. You know, the pressures of the wider world are weighing heavily on education these days. And I'm appreciative that we were able to get through it as an administrative team. I'm appreciative that parents were understanding and supportive. Appreciative that, particularly at Glenbrook, that, you know, we were given the time to look into that matter thoroughly. And I'm super appreciative of the Long Meadow Police Department and Chief Stocks and his team for supporting us at a really difficult time. So we think that those matters are behind us at this point, and Glenbrook is operating safely and back to their normal routines. But we we stand ready to support staff or students who might still be dealing with some unease or worry as a result of that event. Definitely, definitely a troubling time, and, you know, we get through it together as a community, and parents and students were outstanding and supportive and helpful. So the only other thing is, you mentioned, Nicole, the the MSBA. We have checked off the requirements of the eligibility period. We're overachievers. We've we've completed the requirements many months in advance, pretty much. We we had, one of the last requirements was to meet with the, meet with MSBA officials to review their enrollment projections. So Mr. Maza and the Chair of the School Building Committee, Armin Ray, and I met with MSBA officials last week, and they gave us their preliminary projections on what the design enrollment would be for a new combined middle school. The design enrollment that is decided upon ultimately by the MSBA The design enrollment that is decided upon ultimately by the MSBA with us is really critical in terms of shaping the scope and size and program of the, of a project. So we continue to work with the MSBA on that and hope to have some updates for you, concrete updates for you at some point soon. So kudos to Tom, to the, our partners at the DPW and for the Town Manager's Office for helping us complete all the eligibility requirements. We put together a pretty extensive Maintenance and Capital Plan Report that is in the hands of the MSBA right now. So I'm thankful that we have that in the rearview mirror. So big, big project. And looking forward to the next steps probably will be sometime in April, that we will be, Long Meadow will be on the agenda of the Board of the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And our hope would be that the Board at that April meeting would invite us to take the next step, which is to enter into a feasibility study agreement with the MSBA to fully execute that feasibility study that the town has already approved. So we're in great shape and looking forward to, you know, next steps.
Wonderful. Thank you. Gianna?
Can I just comment on that? So thank you for all that Superintendent. I, like in your comments, you are thanking everybody else. And I know that you're not about this, but I feel like you need to be recognized for your leadership, given everything, like last week alone, never mind, you know, the past couple of years or months, but last week alone and the fact that you get to say, like, you know, there's exciting stuff about the MSBA and then there's, you know, the critical and challenging stuff and that's a balance. I just think you need to be recognized for your leadership and all of that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, team effort though, all of it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to assistant superintendent reports.
Nicole?
All right.
Tom limits me as well on these topics.
You get a lot on this page though.
I'm trying to, yeah, I won't read everything, I promise, but.
I think the font is 11.
Yeah. We are well on our way with our MTSS Social, Emotional, and Behavioral Academy. It's a three-year academy that we applied for and were chosen and we don't usually get chosen for that kind of work here in Long Meadow. So it was great. We have about 15 people who are invested in social and emotional especially and some behavioral, you know, challenges that students and faculty are dealing with. And we're working through, I feel like we've been working through the last few meetings with kind of taking an inventory of the supports that we currently have, looking at the data that we have gathered on, you know, school climate, wellness. I already showed a slide that had some of that data up today. And at the last meeting, we set a couple of goals. The first one was really to consider and launch a K-8 evidence-based SEL program. So we have three SEL programs in our elementary school, three different programs. They're all good programs. Students are all attached to them and teachers are all attached to them as well. And the middle school has developed their own kind of advisories with their own curriculum and admins are on board that we really do need a K-8 program that's aligned vertically and horizontally that will hopefully make a big difference in student behavior and expectation. So we're working away on that. We finally got our three kind of quotes on our elementary literacy review. So we'll do a needs assessment and then develop a literacy plan and timelines. And any review will include surveys of families and staff interviews, classroom observations, data analysis for gaps and areas of strengths. And we're kind of marching into this with a really neutral position on this because if you're in education today, in elementary especially, you'll, you hear a lot about literacy and reading and the science of reading. And we have people who are really invested in literacy in this community and have worked really hard. And so I think we'll go through that and hopefully be thinking about whether what we have is the right program for us or do we need to add some other resources or are we looking at something new? But that's up the pike a little bit. So. That's that. Our second semester PGC courses began. Many, many of them have a focus on social and emotional learning. They're required to meet the needs of our district improvement plan when they propose, when our teachers propose courses. So that's helped really to streamline what we're offering for educators. Let's see, our UDL, oh, we've done a couple rounds of learning walks now, one just last week and we haven't debriefed them. We're doing that Thursday morning. But I got into some classes at Williams Middle School, which was awesome. The kids were great. But I really could see evidence of UDL in a couple of the classrooms. We were in and out a few, a couple had subs in, so I didn't stay too long. But in STEAM and civics, there was demonstration of people learning multiple ways of representing. Kids had to do a project in civics class and there was books and posters and audio stuff. It was just really, really cool. And our STEAM classes are the same, doing the same thing, lots of ways of keeping kids' attention and presenting and so if you ever, I think we're going to get our STEAM folks to come here, aren't we? So, yeah, kids built bridges and some of them were holding up to like 40 pounds. I'm holding about three pounds. So it's really interesting. Let's see. You talked about our math coaches tonight. Thanks, Mary. So I'll lighten them off, but they're doing a fabulous job and as are the lit coaches. Our own coaching cycles for educators have started with a focus on equity in the classroom in UDL. I was lucky enough to get an intern at central office after several years of begging. And we had two students who were helping me with thinking about new ways to frame our website and especially in the curriculum area. They're headed off to be computer science majors at school next year. So they knew way more than I did. They were great. We have tons of diverse classroom activities running at the moment. Our anti-racism committee is hosting an event in the spring at LHS. More coming on that. Our climate club is considering ways to reduce lunchroom space. I think you'll hear more about that probably upcoming. We also, I didn't put it on here because I just planned it, but the town had a grant, a climate grant. And we are taking advantage of some of that funding and we've planned some PD with the Audubon Society on climate change. And so there'll be five classes that we'll be able to offer to educators K through 12 to think about ways to have climate education in the classroom. And there'll be a civics component to that too. So I feel like we even have a talk with the admin team.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that. Just some other news, the kind of that's on the side is we have 14 educators on emergency licenses and three on waivers. And the licenses, emergency licenses were extended through 24. So they have another year to go after this year. But that's a lot of educators on emergency licenses in this district especially and the three on waivers. And I expect that many of, we're working closely to get them licensed. So the three on the waivers, we're hoping will be licensed. At least they're, they're moving towards that. And there are some additional criteria for special education teachers and ELL teachers on emergency licenses. So we're working with them also so that they can move forward and get their initial license. So hopefully. We are continuing to hire, recruit and hire for open positions. Oh, we've had some LHS seniors come back and sub, which has been really great. We haven't been as short subbed as we were at the start of the school year. And I got some really funny emails from some of the college grads who are, I mean, sorry, LHS grads who are now back subbing. Really funny. And then I just, I thought I'd write a little bit about close community. I'm the sector rep at this moment. That would be something I think the student and family support person, if we had that position, would probably take over. But for now, I'll still enjoy it. They've done a lot. They've done a social hosting postcard campaign to help high families. Hopefully you've got those. One of the things they partnered with Western Illinois University students with is kind of taking a look at the advertising for marijuana in the local area and found that there was very little kind of ads in stores and it, but the billboard that you see, we've all seen them on 91, are really targeted towards younger, younger, I wouldn't say kids really. There are cartoons, there are rockets, there are things like that that appeals to kids. So our, our close community is working with another coalition in trying to get some of those signs shifted towards more to, you know, you reach adults rather than kids. Close recruited, what they do, recruited some of the local cannabis outlets and the pizza shops to put a little postcard in with their sales, I guess. And it said, you know, please make sure you store this in a safe spot. There's a high incidence of ER visits from kids and pets who have gotten after edibles that looked lots like candy. So. And then amazingly, they had their drug takeback and they, and they partnered with LBD and Western Illinois again and got 201 pounds of medication on the takeback. That's a lot. Is that okay?
A little long. A little long. Sorry. Excellent. Thank you. Questions for Sue, Gianna?
Thank you, Sue.
Sure.
Just two quick thoughts. Where it says, consider an aligned K-8 evidence-based SEL program. I think I've said this before. If y'all could please look in-house first and not look outhouse and spend thousands of dollars on curriculum that your people in-house can create. And then the other thing is for the climate club, ways to reduce cafeteria waste. I can't, the word is escaping me. It's not recycling.
Compost?
Nope.
Composting.
Composting. So a couple of years back, the kids at Williams did this composting, Superintendent, you remember that?
I do, yeah.
It was like, it was like this incredible data that they collected and they brought it to the, to the, not the town manager, but the.
The committee?
The.
They did come and talk to us.
Oh, they did come. So it was, so, but that effort is back. I don't know if you know Liz Bone?
Yeah.
Yeah. So she's back with this whole big effort on composting. So I don't, if you know her, reach out to her and see where she is with that.
Thanks. And the SEL curriculum is something that is a pretty hot topic for grant recipients. So I think we can use some of the close community funding that we get. And there are, I know you're always asking, are you looking for grants? So these are things that, there are grants that could fund this.
And could you use that to pay LPS teachers to create, I mean, counselors and teachers to create?
It's possible. But to create it, usually they're for evidence-based programs. So that wouldn't be an issue to creation. But we might be able to pay them to do the research.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Tom, do you have one for us?
I don't have a formal report, but I did just want to mention that the food service bid will be advertised soon. And so if any of the school committee members would like to sit on the evaluation committee for those bids, please let me know. It'll be later this winter. Maybe need a day or two of time to be present for presentations and meet with a group of evaluators.
All right.
Thank you. Like school day day, Tom?
Usually, yes.
All right. Without further questions then, student rep report. Go for it, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have much for y'all. It's been a long, it's been a long budget and I don't want to bore you too much with student reports, but I did want, did want to speak about outreach and then mentorship, which is a really big thing that I've been seeing around school and I wanted to highlight to y'all. So one would have to be the internship program. Two young ladies, Bella Vega and Caroline Henry, both worked in the elementary schools, part of their internship program, which came to the committee. What was our last meeting? We had Daniel Shea, who worked with the Springfield Police Department. And what was interesting about their work is they, they wanted to be elementary educators, which, kudos to them. I couldn't do that job, so God bless. But really how they focused on working with students in the classroom, that just, that spirit of wanting to give back to their communities or give back to the education system that's done so much for them, especially in their respective schools of Wolf Swamp and Blueberry. It was just such a great impact and great, and they were great mentors, I think, to their, to students from what I heard. Also, the National Honor Society and in conjunction with the Little Readers Club is going to be going to the elementary schools to work with students to believe their, their mission is to read some books, work on some literacy competencies and other stuff like that. And then finally, the LHS music department is heading on our middle school tour next week to really show off our pop repertoire, but also to build up the music program in all of our schools, especially the middle schools. And then once those students transition to high school, build a music program there. And that focuses on that outreach, that mentorship of high schoolers going down to lower grades and working with students who maybe want to access something like music and all of our music classes. And that's what I wanted to bring you guys tonight was there are students out there that are getting out into our, into our district, not just functioning at LHS, but really getting out there and working with our younger grades. And I just wanted to highlight their work. And that's all I have to report at this time.
Excellent. I love that as a theme. I'm going to build off that and just add that I love that when we had the recent college readiness night down the hall, that the student interns were available with presentations, had made great posters and were out there to talk about what they were doing in their internships. And that was fantastic. There were so many students there and it was a great opportunity for parents and the students who attended to get to hear up close and personal what cool things they've been doing. And it was really cool to see that some of our students were doing internships right here in our own district. So, awesome. Thank you.
All right.
All right, other reports. LPVEC?
Yes, a quick report. We met on January 18th. The C-Tech Open House is on February 7th from 5:00 to 7:00 if you'd like to visit. The diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging position that we have been trying to hire for, we did identify a candidate and at the time of this meeting, they were checking references. So I will update you when I find out more. Once a meeting, I like to talk about buses. They are going to order 25 new buses. They'll be ordered by April and they take approximately six to nine months to come in. The Director of Finance also gave a preliminary budget overview for fiscal year '24 and our next meeting is on February 15th.
All right.
Our 2324.
Thank you. Energy and Sustainability.
Yeah, Mary talks about buses. I talk about home energy audits. Yeah, we continue to talk about home energy audits. So if you haven't had an audit, sign up for one. I just did one. They're easy and they give you lots of recommendations for ways to save money and save energy. The other thing that came up, and I think this is important as we think about the middle school project, Long Meadow is a green community. We opted into that several years ago. And along with that, the benefits of getting some of the grants that Sue has talked about, we also have to comply with certain building codes. And there are new building codes coming out. And so just for the folks on the middle school building project and committee, I think there are going to be some changes related to building codes that apply to us as a green community. And what I would say is the committee doesn't fully understand all of those things because I think the new regulations are just coming out. But that's something I hope that we can be aware of because it's going to have potentially a pretty big impact, which I think will be really good.
Yeah.
But it's going to be very different than how we built this building.
Good to go. All right. Thank you. And Seal, Gianna?
Thank you, Nicole. So SEAL, Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, has their next meeting on technology. Kevin, thank you for inspiring. February 8th, so that's, is a Wednesday, February 8th at 7:00 PM. It is via Zoom. It will be on 504s, presented by the Federation of Children with Special Needs. And Mary, you went to the last meeting. Mary, did you want to say anything about the last meeting?
It was wonderful. And I would also recommend that everyone go. It was great professional development also for, you know, so I was attending as a parent, but I was also thinking about being an educator and attending these meetings. It was really informative. That's all.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right. Subcommittee reports. Finance sub, Jamie? No, Tom's going to take it.
Yep. We, Finance Subcommittee met last Wednesday. There are a couple items on the agenda tonight. The first is a building use request that the Finance Subcommittee did review. And it is a request from the Indian Association of Greater Springfield for use of the Long Meadow High School on April 8th, 2023. And due to the number of attendees, this would require school committee approval.
All right. Any questions on this request? We have the, making a motion then?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the building use request for the Indian Association. approve the building use request for the Indian Association of Greater Springfield for use of Long Meadow High School on April 8th, 2023, as outlined in the request dated January 11th, 2023.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Thank you. And yes for me as well.
Also, in your packet tonight is a fiscal year '23 budget report, a projection for my best guess as to where we may end the fiscal year. I would say it is subject to change as additional information comes in related to some of those variables like utility use, special education costs, substitutes, and the like. So, but I thought it was important to have for you. So, as you're considering the '24 requests, you kind of have a sense of where the '23 budget may end based on the best information we have right now. No action is needed. It's primarily informational. The last item, and it's not on the agenda, but the Finance Sub had received a presentation from Mike Capitasto and Tom Landers in regards to the athletic program. They provided a financial report for fiscal year '22, so last year's operation. I would say there was some preliminary discussions in regards to the financial operations of the program. I would think that some additional information will be brought forward in discussion with Finance Sub to potentially bring forward to the school committee at a later point. So, I don't know if Jamie or Kevin, if you guys have anything else you want to...
No, I think you hit it. We had a pretty good discussion, really in-depth, about some different adjustments that should be at least discussed. So, I think at our next meeting, we're going to have it as a topic, really come up with some recommendations to bring to the committee. And at that point, make, you know, adjustments as a group and, you know, which, whatever we all find appropriate at that time. Not only will include athletics, but I'm sure we'll discuss, you know, the busing, all the different fees that we charge as a community, and come back and do that all encompassing for next year's budget. So, we're going to incorporate it. But it will be a pretty, you know, in-depth discussion and, you know, potentially, you know, some pretty decent adjustments that we'll be recommending.
All right. Thank you. Questions? All right. Moving ahead, I see no other Subcommittee reports. I know we're in process for scheduling some of those, so we'll potentially have reports at our next meeting. No other ongoing business. So, that moves us to new business and begins with the 2023-2024 school year calendar. The Calendar Committee has put forward a committee. And do you want to speak to that?
Sure. Yeah. So, for your review is the '23-24 school year calendar. This is a calendar that was, that has my recommendation and also has the recommendation of our Calendar Committee. The contract that we have with our Unit A educators provides for and requires a Calendar Committee. So, it's a group of administrators, a large group of administrators and teachers that go through drafts until we arrive at one that we think best serves the district. And so, for your review and consideration is this '23-24 calendar. It would have the first day of school for students on Tuesday, August 29th. The last day of school would be Wednesday, January, excuse me, June 12th, barring snow days. There is a number of other, you'll see, we've basically replicated past calendars in terms of conference dates and even the fourth professional development day that's coming back to our calendar next year. We have plugged in a date for that, and that is on March 8th of 2024. So, happy to answer. Any questions that you might have in preparation for a vote?
All right. Questions or comments? And/or motions?
Can I just make one comment before we get to the motion? Was there discussion around the February break day? I know we had a pretty in-depth conversation last year about whether other districts were having success with it. I know Wilbraham's gotten rid of it, correct?
Yeah, they did.
And there was one other district around here that's also got rid of it?
Yeah. It, it hasn't, in my, you know, my experience, my understanding is it hasn't seemed to work for districts that have tried it largely because it just doesn't line up with other districts, you know, in terms of...
Because there's obviously professionals.
Yeah, it's, yeah. And, and...
Are they going back? Do we know? Or?
I have not heard that. I've heard no, I've heard no momentum around going in that direction. The other, the other piece of it is that the, our, for better or worse, our contract spells out...
That particular week.
That, that vacation week, the February vacation week. So, that would be something that if we wanted to take that on, we would want to engage the LEA with that.
So, I guess I would just say we keep an eye on other day. I mean, if it ends up being one, then two, then five, we probably need to adjust to because it's going to be the reverse. I was just speaking for the kids. You know, they just went out on the fifth, not the 12th.
All right. Any further questions or comments? And/or motions?
I move on the recommendation of the Calendar Committee that the school committee approve the '23-24 school year calendar as presented and marked draft for.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right. Next up is acceptance of a grant from Glenn Brook or Williams. Would someone like to take this one? Would you want?
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to. So, in, this is the first opportunity to employ your new policy around the acceptance of gifts, although frankly, we would have brought this to you even before that policy was in place. So, we're really pleased to report that our two middle school STEM teachers, Emery Salvon and John McCarthy, attended a Massachusetts STEM Week Robotics Professional Development Opportunity, and they came away with 25 Lego Spike Prime Robotics Kits. So, the total value of these 50 kits is impressively $19,970.50. So, in line with your policy, we would need a vote of the committee to accept this donation, which becomes the property of the district.
All right. Fantastic. And way to go on them.
Great news.
That's awesome. Any questions or comments? Or motions?
I move on the recommendation of the Superintendent that the school committee accept the Mass STEM Week Robotics Grant Award as described in the email dated January 19th, 2023, from the middle school principals.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Gianna?
I couldn't get it out fast enough earlier, but this is pure awesome. So...
It really is. Congratulations. All right. Oh, Sue, did you have something else?
Yeah. It's a donation, not a grant.
I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure. I don't know if it matters, but Tom's telling me it doesn't. I saw them. They're there. They're really cool, but they were a donation.
Yeah.
Okay. Should we change the wording of the motion, Diane?
Yeah, but, yes, I guess.
Would you like to amend the motion?
Yes.
Which is better than a grant because you don't have to do any paperwork.
Okay. Since we have not yet voted, we don't need to vote on the amendment. We can just amend. Okay. Go for it.
I would just say, change where it says Mass STEM Week Robotics Grant to Mass STEM Week Robotics Donation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Okay. So, we're voting on the amended motion now for the donation. Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you very much. All right. Seeing no other items on our agenda, we are headed towards executive session, and there is a motion in front of us.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, F, and H, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. I will note that we will be returning to open session, and then we will vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. We will return. Thank you very much. Dagan, have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Dagan.
All right. You're clear.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Do you want to do a separate zoom?
[164.12]
Right, didn't we already?
Are you guys all set?
Um, yep, we are. Yes, no discussion, just vote and move on. Let me know when you're ready for us, Brian.
All right, here we go. Stand by in five, four, three, two, one.
All right, welcome back to the open session of our meeting. Our new business is continuing on and we have a few memorandums of agreement to vote on. We have a recommended motion for Unit H.
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement with the Long Menor Education Association, Unit H, setting the Unit H collective bargaining agreement from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. We have another memorandum of agreement regarding Unit A.
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement with the Long Menor Education Association, Unit A, dated January 31st, 2023.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. That concludes our new business, so we are ready for one final motion.
I move that the school committee adjourn the January 31st, 2023 school committee meeting.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes, second.
There we go. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you very much for coming out tonight and we will see you next week for the public hearing.
Good night.
Thank you.